I apologize to the those in the chambers this evening and watching online and on cable. We had another meeting prior to this, Urban Renewal, and it started late and ran over. Appropriate action will be taken with that chairman later, at a later date. So we'll move right ahead and remind councilors, if you would, be sure to speak right into your microphones. Thank you. We have citizens' comments is the first item, and this is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, with city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time to exchange of questions. At the conclusion of the agenda item, a councillor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. We have those who signed up.
David Elton, 1411th. I'll make it quick, since I don't want to be in front of the microphone too long, and this will be kind of a, well, it's an echo. John Sullivan and I, who is behind me, Mr. Mayor, you know him, he has a background extensively in construction that's impressive, otherwise I wouldn't use him for my facility. Nikki Price in the Cultural Center has a budget variance of seventy and eighty thousand for the roof. What I was proposing to her, and this obviously this would take a week or two or a month, was that it's possible to have a public-private partnership for the roof, for fundraising for the roof, where a private group would come in for half, and the city would be responsible for half. So you could potentially save forty thousand dollars now. Obviously, that takes a while to go through that process, but if you take a third bid or a fourth bid, whether it's from John and his company or someone else, I would suggest that that is a possibility out there. Now, one of the reasons I got incensed about the comment about volunteering is because I have volunteered, and I've already volunteered a couple nights, and there's a friend of mine who's a famous comedian, Mr. Mayor, you know who it is, I don't have his permission to say his name, but he has foregone and said that he will be happy to show up here for free. That alone could potentially solve much of the problems. So keep this in mind, I'm in town for another two days or three days, and I try to return as soon as possible. I would love to help you fundraise, and I have a very close friend that literally is an expert at construction. So I will let it go at that. I'll be happy to entertain questions or meet with anybody who shows up at Beach Town Coffee tomorrow morning at 7:05 a.m. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I just am here on behalf of Taft High School to say thank you and to give you a bit of an update on your investment in our math improvement and our school-wide collaboration project. We are doing our year-end evaluation of our systems, and one of the main things we've watched is the alignment of all of our curriculum to the new Common Core standards. The students' test scores are improving, their success is improving, but part of what I'm excited about is they're aiming for the target two, three years down the road, not for the target from yesterday. And I feel like in the past, we were always trying to figure out what the target was. Well, we know the target, and we're teaching the students not for today so much, but for tomorrow and for their future. And your investment in our school has helped us with that, and we appreciate it. We also have, the work that you've supported actually has helped all across our school, not only math. This work was done elementary, K-12, in math in all the schools, but it was also done in all of our departments. So our Language Arts Department got an award for the school district, the first of its kind this year, called the Spirit of Collaboration. And they were recognized for how they came together, they collaborated across different lines and grade levels, to really be the model and set the tone for the whole district of how to work together. And what was neat is the district and the certified union came together to give this award together. So that was also fantastic. Our Science Department also being recognized for the great work they're doing, and all of that because of the investment that you made initially in math, but that also crossed those lines into the other areas. So thank you. The students have had a good year. We have a half-day of school tomorrow, and then the teachers' wrap-up shop. And I know our Mecha students that some of you invested in personally, got to go to their, on their trip to the Cesar Chavez Conference and do some different things, they've had a wonderful experience this year. So thank you very much. Any questions? I did appreciate seeing Gary at graduation and Mayor Anderson at several of the events, and anytime that you guys would like to come by and either get a tour or go to work, let me know.
Mr. Mayor, I know this isn't a time for give and take, but Mr. Reed has done one of the best jobs at the high school, and I'm not speaking, from everybody I talked to, we're just deeply appreciative and want to thank you very much.
What's been fun is that one person can't do much, and it's really become a team effort. So thank you for recognizing that.
I would echo that, Mr. Reed. Thank you, and thanks for coming, either yourself, your staff, and the students this past school year, coming to city council meetings, because it is helpful and it's engaging, engaging the community to what the kids are doing. So if we can, go ahead and take the summer off. We're not going to.
Thank you.
But plan on it again in the fall, as the kids come back to school. Let's keep them in front of us.
Sounds good. We actually have a student council member that is ready to come and serve on a regular basis next year.
That's what I like to hear.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Anybody else in the audience that didn't get a chance to sign up, like to speak? Seeing none, then we'll move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items of a repeat or routine nature, considered under a single action. A councillor may remove a consent agenda item for separate consideration upon request. Let me read through the items. Number one, request to read ordinance first by title only. Number two, minutes of the meeting, May 13, 2013. Number three, minutes of special meeting, May 20, 2013. Number four, minutes of emergency meeting, May 21, 2013. Number five, Oregon Liquor Control Commission, change of ownership, Nu Feng Wing Yau. Number six, intergovernmental mental agreement, Oregon Department of Transportation Cooperative Improvement Agreement, number 28997, U.S. Highway 101, Southeast 23rd to Southwest 35th Street. Number seven, intergovernmental agreement, Oregon Department of Transportation Right-of-Way Services Agreement, number 29065, U.S. Highway 101, Southeast 23rd to Southwest 32nd Street. Number eight is Final Design Engineering Award, Northeast Voyage Avenue and Lake Drive Local Improvement District. And number nine is intergovernmental agreement, Oregon Department of Administrative Services, surplus property. Any of the council would like to remove for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to remove five, six, eight, and nine for now.
Any others?
Oh, wait a minute, one more, I think. I think I had the number written down here wrong. It's the number seven, I think it is.
So five, six, seven, eight, nine?
No, it's the one on Southeast 23rd. It's number six. I guess I've already got it down here. We're okay.
So council, I'm showing five, six, seven, eight, and nine. You want to?
That's fine.
Okay. Any others? Would that entertain a motion to approve one, two, three, four of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? All right. Number five, Roger.
I just noticed on the Fun Hing Yun request for the, in Oregon Liquor Control Commission, there was a box in there that was checked, which said there would be no manager, and I just, that kind of raised a red flag for me. It seems to me that if you're running a liquor operation of some kind, you need to have a manager overseeing that. And that was checked on the box. Now, I don't know if that's something we're supposed to do anything about, but to me, that was a red flag.
Yeah, I saw that. I interpreted it as the owner is one and the same, no separate entity, no separate manager.
Well, the owner's from Portland, the way I had read that, so I don't know how he can be in two places at one time.
Good point. Any help?
I'm not familiar with if there's a separate manager or not.
Okay.
There was only one history on one person, but I believe it was the owner, so I think it's an owner-operator. I didn't see any notes on the other documents that said that there would be a manager.
So I guess if you're going to approve it, it would be, or pass it on, since we don't approve it, it would be under the assumption that we've done background to check on one individual?
Can we just pass it on and indicate that we have a concern about the fact that the thing was passed without a manager?
Well, I think we'll just pass on and say, let them know that we approved the person who applied, but if there's another person, we'll need to run their background as well.
Okay.
Senator?
That's fine. That's fine.
Would you make a motion to approve item number five, then?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number six, the intergovernmental agreement?
The documents that we had showed that it was twelve thousand, seven hundred, or five hundred and seventy-four. It's really twelve million, five hundred, there was a zero missing. I just think we need to check that typo to make sure that's right in the agreement.
And actually, the dollar amount is not enough to complete the project. There's more money gapping, so we'll make that change, because it is twelve million.
And then there was another question I had in there. What are the storm water treatment facilities? They mentioned that two or three times, and we really don't have an explanation about what they are, and those are things that we have to provide.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The storm drainage facilities are called Filteras, and so they, they're throughout the project on the west side of the highway, and they have a filtration system underneath them, and so we would be cleaning them out with some of our Vector equipment, and then they will also have a Volt-type storm drainage system, and so we would also clean that out with our Vector truck, like we clean our storm drains, and that was our agreement with them kind of throughout the process that we would do that.
And let's see, the stoplight that's going in, is that going to be a demand light or a smart light?
Yes.
So it's not just on a regular cycle regardless of traffic?
Right.
It's a demand.
All new lights are on that.
Sometimes I wonder.
Yeah, I think our intersection at Sixth Street by D. Lakes School or the Cultural Center is, that one's not a smart light, so.
No.
So we do have one, but the new ones are.
And then the? Number four, and they're under the city requirements, so we're responsible for all maintenance and control, and I just wanted to make sure, on the stoplight, you don't, doesn't ODOT usually do the maintenance and control?
Yes, they do the maintenance. We have an agreement with them for all of the signals, and so they do the maintenance on them, but we have an agreement, and we pay so much a month for that signal.
Okay.
Light maintenance.
That wasn't clear.
But they want us to be directly billed for the power, is one of the things that they asked.
Okay. That wasn't real clear. That's all I have on that one.
Okay. Let me check. Yes, Chester?
On the same item, Lila, on page, page four, number 12, city agrees to donate any city-owned properties necessary for the completion of the project. Do we anticipate donating city property?
Well, on the other right-of-way agreement, they will, there are two pieces of property that they actually have to purchase from the city that are in the ODOT right-of-way that would remain ODOT right-of-way, and they would actually pay us for those, and then the right-of-way on the side streets, there's a little map that you can see, they would acquire whatever's needed and then give it back to the city after the project's completed.
Okay, so the property simply consists of right-of-way?
Yes.
And page six, number three, state agrees, city shall construct the improvements and city obligations, state shall review and approve the parking lot design. Will we be designing and constructing the parking lot?
Now, I believe you're talking about the 35th Street parking lot?
Hmm.
Yes, and that's the one that you just previously voted on?
Renewal.
On Southwest 35th?
Urban renewal.
Urban renewal? That was the parking lot at the end of the strip, and then you decided on that C2 option, so you haven't?
Well, I think this is referring to the parking lot across the street.
And it's on?
Perhaps I'm wrong.
On page six? I believe that's, I believe that's still that same parking lot. That's the only, and the only other one it would be, would be the Eagles parking lot, because they're doing a new access for them, but I believe that's the 35th Street.
Okay, my mistake. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve, oh, listen, hang on, it's on six. Entertain a motion to approve item six under the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Roger, number seven?
Skip that seven, if you would. I got that involved in the number six.
Anybody else have any on seven? Entertain a motion to approve item seven?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion with a second to approve item seven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. Item eight?
Item eight, I had to read the entire document before I realized what the subject of it was until I finally was able to dig it out, but it seems to me that the heading on the staff report would be a lot easier, if it just said Voyage LID, then we would know what it was, and that was, it was okay, I found out, but I had to really dig, just a suggestion.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on? Entertain a motion to approve, number eight?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All with opposed, hearing none? Number nine?
My comment on number nine was, it's a surplus property agreement, and we end up, they're charging us for mileage and surcharges. I was wondering why we can't deliver the stuff ourselves and save the mileage charge that they?
We almost always do.
Well, then why do we have that in the agreement?
It's their standard agreement.
Oh.
We could, you know, we could spend an awful lot of money trying to get that changed, but it's our option to deliver stuff.
Okay. As long as we have the option, we don't get charged for it, that's fine.
Right.
Okay. I'm good.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'm sorry, hold.
No, that, I was just going to say.
On that same issue, Mr. Hawker, Attachment B, page 10, they have a mile-per-gallon figure of five in figuring out the reimbursement for mileage?
Well, to best of my knowledge, we've never had to reimburse them, because we've never had them deliver anything. But when you're hauling a vehicle with a tow truck, for example, that would not surprise me.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Who else? Number nine? All right. Entertain a motion to approve item nine?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Thank you. All right. Special?
Mr. Mayor? I just want anyone to know from here on out, if they ever think we rubber-stamp everything, all they have to do is remember this consent agenda. And I will rest my case.
So noted. Thank you, sir.
After that.
Special presentation, Pacific West Ambulance Service.
We missed you last meeting. I apologize for that.
Were you, you were to be here, or?
I was not the one that was scheduled to be here.
I understand, though, someone had a child born, was that?
Yes, yeah, so.
That's a good enough excuse.
Exactly. So tonight, or, good evening, council members. Tonight, I'd like to tell you who we are and the services that we provide to our community. Starting out, we provide services.
Could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Brady Templeton. I'm a paramedic and field training officer with Pacific West Ambulance. So we provide services from as far south as Ona Beach, which is south of Newport, all the way north up to Cascade Head, and as far east is our county line, which is Highway 20, mile post 33, and Highway 18, mile post 15. We have ambulances stationed within Toledo, Newport, Depot Bay, and Lincoln City, and we provide services to all the other outlying little communities. We operate under a wide range of protocols and standing orders under Dr. Erling Oxenholt. We provide, or we respond on emergent and non-emergent calls, which is our main priority, providing advanced life support and basic life support to the people within our community. We also offer transports from North Lincoln Hospital and Pacific Community Hospital to larger hospitals within the valley for services such as trauma, cardiology, and neurology, which our small community just doesn't have to offer. We also have a wheelchair division, which provides transports for seniors, people with disabilities, and other people that just don't have the means of transportation to their doctor's appointments, and within that division, we also can go to pharmacies and pick up their prescriptions, deliver to them, to make sure that the people are getting their medical needs met. Recently, within the last three years, we've also started what's called a Lifeguard membership. It's very comparable to the FireMed, which more people are familiar with. I think this year, for a family membership, it's fifty-nine dollars, and that provides medically necessary transportation, ambulance transportation for people, where they aren't faced with upwards of a twelve-hundred-dollar ambulance bill, they just pay that fifty-nine-dollar ambulance fee, or fifty-nine-dollar membership fee. And also recently, we've brought on a public relations lady, and she's been arranging many community events, which reaches out more towards seniors and letting them know what resources within our community is available to them, and also she's playing a big part in this coming Saturday's touch-a-truck up at the community center. Yeah, that's about all I have to really say.
Okay. Question?
Okay.
It's a, you're a private enterprise, are you?
Exactly, we are.
That's, I thought. Could you answer a question, since we hear your sirens so often?
Sure.
Do you chase the fire trucks, or do the fire trucks chase you?
Well, it depends who gets out the door first, but usually the fire trucks follow behind us, since we have, all of our communities have volunteer fire departments, so most people are responding from their homes. So they're usually out the door a couple minutes behind us, because it takes them a few minutes to get to the fire station. So North Lincoln Fire Department tries to staff people 24 hours a day within their departments, but with it being volunteer, that's not always a possibility for them.
So how cost-effective is both of you chasing the same phone call?
Um, I don't know exactly if it's cost-effective or not. I mean, since we're completely two different entities, I mean, we all have the same goal, but we rely on the fire department for the medical calls, because, for manpower.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
Other questions from council?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. I'm a member of Lifeguard.
Okay, great.
And have been since I was, I signed up for the Lifeguard as soon as I found out about it, and we've had, unfortunately, a couple of occasions to use it, and I'm an advocate that if you do not have it, you should get it.
Yeah.
It's well worth the money, and the sense of, sense of well-being when something goes wrong. And frankly, having been there when the fire department responds quickly on several different occasions for several different things, it's rather nice to have them get there and the ambulance shows up, and they are extremely professional, all of them, and the welfare of the patient, even if they're argumentative and grumpy, is their primary concerns.
The patient being grumpy?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I can't imagine Wes being grumpy. I can't imagine that.
Agreed with you, Wes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I, too, am a member.
Great.
And as soon as I found out about the program, I jumped right on it, because I'm an old insurance hack, but I guess you can look at that as insurance, but it's one of the least expensive insurance policies you can have.
Exactly. It's a great peace of mind for people.
Great. Thank you, Brady. Thank you for coming and sharing what you do, and like I say, we hear the sirens a lot.
Great, thank you.
Next order of business is an appointment to the Sustainability Committee. Chester, I understand you and Gary did some interview, and have a candidate?
Yes, we did. We interviewed Liz Barden, works at the hospital. Intelligent, articulate, interested citizen, willing to commit time and effort on issues she believes in, and I'm glad that she has chosen to volunteer. Councillor Ellingson?
No, I, once again, I know I've said this before, but the chance we get to talk to people at the level we do when we're interviewing them is really a privilege, and our city has a lot of really special people on its committees.
Great.
But we're happy to recommend Liz.
Great. Would you mind making a motion to council to accept Liz Barden as, to the Sustainability Committee?
So moved. I'd second that.
Councilors, we have a recommendation and a motion to approve Liz Barden to the Sustainability Committee. Any discretion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Thank you. Thank you, too, for interviewing and reading through. I think there is still room on that committee for a couple more people, but they're starting to get to the quorum list, anyway. Next item, we have commercial space inventory. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. We've recently completed our 13th inventory of available commercial space, and this year, we're showing a total of one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four square feet of commercial space available, thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty-four square feet for sale, seventy-four thousand, seventy square feet for lease. This is about a 26% decrease from last year. There's about another fifteen thousand square feet that we can't figure out whether it's available or not. We know it's vacant, but we can't, we haven't been able to get in touch with an owner to find out whether they're vacant, or whether they're available or not. But even if that were available, it still would be about a 15% decrease over last year. And last year was the highest since we've done it, so. I think what it means is that we're seeing some recovery from the problems of the economy over the last few years.
Mr. Townsend, and I couldn't tell from the report, but to your knowledge, or is there any things that went away, not for rent or rented, but either demolished space?
Nothing of any size that I can think of, and nothing occurs to me at all, and certainly nothing of any size.
So that's a good figure, then.
Some things that maybe should be, but haven't been.
Those are the ones you're not quite sure of whether they're.
Some of them. Some of them.
Yeah. I'm visualizing those. So, other question, I guess the other question I would have is, is this available to the public?
Yes.
Okay. So, they contact planning and could get it?
Like, we provide it to anybody who asks for it, but we also make a point of getting it to the Chamber of Commerce, and like, realtors make use of it regularly.
Okay. The questions, it's helpful anyway, nice, a nice gauge anyway. Thank you, sir.
Heading the right direction.
City manager report, we have bus service topic.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a brief announcement on the link, which is the Loop Bus Service within Lincoln City. It does not affect the North County schedule. There are some changes. Number one is that they are available online either at our website, lincolncity.org, or the county, Lincoln County Transit site. The changes are briefly, there's some changes in the bus stop times, so if people are not cognizant of that and haven't used the bus just in the last few days, they need to know that the times have changed, and they could miss a bus if they don't catch that change. They've corrected a couple of names of the stops. The former Buy Mart location is now called Lighthouse Square. They've added two stops, one Chinook Winds Casino, and the second one, the new Buy Mart location. There are new stops on the route. And they've designated some stops that were on the route as on-call as needed, and that's on the northbound route, Rainbow Villas, Warsborne Saw, Medical Center at West Devils Lake Road, and Southwest Ebb at Highway 101. But I, also will note that, for the most part, and those stops is on-call, somebody ought to phone in in advance if they want the bus to stop at one of those locations. Now, if the bus passes that and sees somebody visible, they will tend to pick them up. And also, they will let people off at any safe place along the route, if it's a safe pullover. So, anyway, keep in mind if you're using the link, or might start like to use the link, because it's a wonderful service that's being offered. It's a buck, it's worth it, so.
Those changed June 1st today, not, wasn't that the?
Yeah, on June 1st, and this is the first chance that we've had to announce it here, because we didn't get it in time for the last meeting, then we had a skip meeting due to Memorial Day, so, but it is, it is on the website.
Good. Thank you, sir.
And the other item, I just wanted to announce that the Agnes Creek Open Space Thinning Project is now underway. I believe the contractor showed up today, or will tomorrow. We're getting a letter out to Bordering Properties explaining this a little bit. They can expect, residents in an area, people can expect three to four logging trucks a day that will be going eastbound on Bard Road to turn onto 101 either north or south. They have two different locations they're hauling the logs to. We expect a total of about 30 trucks coming out of there, over the, over the thinning project. Somewhere along the line, probably near the end, we will have a public tour to show what's being done. The contractor is, not only are they taking out trees to improve the forest health, and that's the primary focus of this project, but they're also using the trails that they're hauling the logs out on, will be converted mostly by them to nature trails. They'll be shipping those trails and clearing an area for, if we want to do a park, a trailhead parking area. So, we will be getting more information out about this and doing a tour sometime before the end of it.
Mr. Hocker, this is probably, it's a question, as far as public staying away from, for the time being, the logging operation, or is this something that you can stand and watch?
No, they really do need to stay away. There are safety concerns that would shut down an operation or cause an inconvenience, so what we want to do is limit that to a tour that we create. And if we need to, we can do a couple different times to make sure people are given the opportunity to do that. But we really don't want people on the site while the equipment is working there. There is a serious safety concern, and I certainly don't want to see anybody hurt.
Unless you're Roger or Wes, and they both have the life card.
Chester, you had a question?
Mr. Hocker, has the market moved in our favor, the log market?
Well, a little bit, it, yes, it did. It went down quite a bit. About a year ago, it was rising, and then it, and then it went back down and has recovered, and it looks pretty favorable. Of course, it's a, it's a commodity, and it's subject to different pricing, but my understanding is the pricing has now been locked in.
And regarding the Link Bus Service, Allison's memo indicates that the city provides a partial subsidy for this important service. How much of a subsidy do we provide?
In the current budget year, it's $25,000, and that pays for one extra hour a day and for Saturday service.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Hocker, it just dawned on me again, the logging.
Yes, sir.
Last I checked, we have enough controversial stuff going on. I didn't want you to be playing into a Newport log truck issue, so you're sure it's only 30 trucks?
No, I'm not sure. That's, that was an estimate from the contractor.
But they'll go away? It's a limited period of time?
Yes.
Okay.
Although, now that you mention it, this is, this is what we call a demonstration project. It's, it's not on the whole open space. It's a, I believe it's about 30 acres out of a 60-acre total, and of course, we own other major holdings too. This is the demonstration project to show how we can improve the forest health. We know that open space is a sensitive thing to many of us, and want, do this only to improve the health. We do expect to clear a few bucks on this deal, not as much as if we just would have bid it out to the highest-priced contractor who would come in there with big equipment and hurt the open space. This is a light-touch logger, and so we're not going to make a lot of money on this, because we're having a lot of oversight. Our consulting forester is going to be onsite, has marked every tree that's going to be cut in 30 acres. So, we'd like to continue this kind of a program on additional areas of Agnes Creek, on Spyglass. We have not even had the contractor review our 60 acres north of the villages we've owned for many years. We'd like to have them take a look at that, and potentially some of the village's property that we might want to have them take a hard look at.
You're right. We knew this was coming and have been anticipating, so it's nice to know that we're.
Yeah, permit was issued for the, for the cut. There was a public hearing on this. There was a workshop, combined workshop with the planning, or, excuse me, with the Parks and Recreation Board and Open Space Committee and Council. There's been a lot of press on it. Unfortunately, that was a couple of years ago.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Appicello, anything?
I have a number of items on the agenda, but.
Not, not yet. I wonder, could you update us, and I, sorry to throw this to you, but the appeal process with the billboard on the north end of town?
There has been no appeal.
No appeal, okay. So, when would we anticipate a billboard disappearing?
Well, I, I notified the attorney for the owners that I would be initiating enforcement action if they did not promptly remove it, and I did that last week. So, probably in the next week or so, we'll be doing something.
Thank you. Okay, then, we'll move into our public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, may I ask Mr. Hocker something very quickly?
Certainly.
And I kind of went over this with Chester, although we didn't agree that I, or either one of us came up with an idea at the time, but we have interviewed people for committees over several months, and I'm going to refer specifically to the Sustainability Committee, where we talked to an individual at least two months ago, and the committee at that time did not have enough for a quorum to meet, and so it hasn't. And so, that person probably is wondering when, when we're going to start meeting, and then we just interviewed another person, which we approved this evening. Would there be a way with the committees that we could keep everybody up to date concerning when a projected time is for meetings? I mean, I know some of the committees have staff people, like Sandy works with the VCB, and, you know, other staff members work on a couple different committees, but to my knowledge, there are a few committees that we're not networking with right now, I don't think. Or maybe one or two, and maybe not three.
I was not aware of that, because every active committee has a staff member assigned, and I'll double-check to make sure that word is getting out. Now, there are several committees that aren't being filled currently. One is, that we haven't removed from the books, is the Business Incubator Committee. Council decided to let that space sit, waiting for a different kind of an opportunity, and the other one, I believe, is Citizen Involvement Committee, which is kind of covered by all the other committees that, and we've had little or no interest in that one that's been advertised. So, those don't have assigned anybody to them, but I think everybody else does, yes.
Hi, I'd like to answer your question about the Sustainability Committee. The member that you're considering tonight would be the fifth out of the five-member committee, and so we have started last week on preparing an agenda for the first meeting, and Timothy has been contacting the members to see when a good time would be to meet. So, we're moving ahead now, and we're anxious to get started.
Yeah, I just, I didn't want to, and it's my responsibility, maybe I should have had more information, but when we're talking to people, to tell them, "Meeting is imminent", and then.
Yes.
Two or three months later, we're still, and I'm not faulting anyone for that, I'm just wondering if it would make sense, maybe once a month, and we wouldn't, you or someone wouldn't have to give an exact report, but rather just to say, "These committees have met or will meet", or if some, one committee is not meeting, and I realize too that we had decided there would be a couple of committees that we're just going to let lay fallow, so I'm not talking about that.
Yeah, there's no members of those to inform anything of, so.
Right, but if the.
Are you suggesting we inform the council about the activities of the committees?
No.
Or the committee members?
Just to let David know that the committees have met or are meeting.
Okay.
And then, if he has a concern because they're not, we can decide what to do about it.
Counselor, may I suggest that the committees are ours, not David's, so.
Well, then David could.
The answer really is, if you have an interest, and I, I think Deborah's correct, she could easily have, or, because I get them now, minutes from numerous committees. They just, I thought they were sending them to all of councils, so you'd be copied minutes, and you can kind of track to what's going on for, and I think it's worthwhile doing, because you get a sense of what the committee activity is. But it's to our benefit that they, they meet, because they're our advisors, and we're asking them to advise us. So, I think it's working. The Sustainability was one that was taking a hiatus for a while, has now gotten recharged as a result of the bike pedestrian plan and transportation, so it's, you know, seems to be filling up with people interested in moving that plan along. So, if you're not getting minutes, let me know, and I'll, I'll make sure you are, you will.
If I'm not, it's my fault, because I could daze into it more and find it, but I haven't. And so, I mean, it's, I'm innocent, but I'm at fault.
Mr. Appicello?
Later on the agenda, you have an amendment to 206, I think, Chapter 206 to the code, which was adding a, kind of a uniform quorum requirement. That's actually from a larger ordinance, which is a uniform of committees and commission ordinance, and one of the, which we're going to work on, it just wasn't the highest priority. And one of the things that you normally do is you put on, as an informational item for acceptance on the agenda, the minutes of the committees. So, if that's something you're interested in, we can play around with that with the draft ordinance.
We talk, what, the best route to go with that? Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Excuse me. I believe that most of the minutes are on the website available as well. They're trying to get them, they're trying to do better getting them on the website.
Thank you. So, there'd be numerous places that the public could see it as well as the councilors. All right. So, why don't we then move into public hearing? We have a public hearing to receive citizen comments on Resolution Number 2013-12, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. I'll declare the public hearing now open. Staff report?
We receive about $200,000 or so dollars every year from the state from the liquor tax that they collect. Half of this is just given to us as liquor tax allocation. The other half is allocated a different way and called state shared revenues. In order for us to receive that $100,000 or so state shared revenues, we are required to hold a public hearing with the Budget Committee, and also with the City Council, and to elect to receive those revenues. The purpose of the public hearing being to give the public a chance to comment on how those monies should be used.
So, it's really not whether we receive them or not, it's how they would be used?
Well, I suppose the public could also comment on whether we should receive those monies as well.
And so, that would coassign with the Budget Committee?
Yes, yes. It goes along with the budget process.
Good. Thank you, thank you. Questions, staff, nothing? Anybody in the audience that would like to speak on the resolution of receiving state Hearing none. Any agencies, other public entities? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move.
Second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we have a resolution later on that we can deal with on that. The next public hearing, I'll declare open to be, to receive citizen comments on Resolution Number 2013-13, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City adopting the 2013-14 budget. It's a discussion on budget changes.
Yeah, this is really two items, and I hope it's not confusing. The first item is a public hearing to receive comments on, on the budget. That's already been through the Budget Committee and was approved. It was, it has been extensively discussed. It's been posted online since the third or fourth week of April. Now is the, there was a public hearing in front of the Budget Committee, now there's a public hearing in front of the City Council. Unless you continue this public hearing, this will be the only public hearing on the budget in front of council before it's adopted. And then after the public hearing, we would like to discuss, have an additional item to discuss changes to the adopted budget.
So, the intent would be to vote on the budget next meeting, which would be the 24th of June, and this, this public hearing can actually be continued until then, to give anybody else. But let me, let me check, you know, just so you can be thinking about what you'll want to do. Is there anybody in the audience now that would like to make comment on either, or I guess it would be the public, the actual budget? guess it would be the public, the actual budget? Seeing none? Any agencies, public entities? Okay, so.
While that's still open, then, I would like to have some input into changes. And then, here's the problem. If there's any complex changes to the budget, I think it's really important that we finalize or air those tonight, so that we can come in at the, at the next meeting, which is our last meeting to adopt the budget, with the documents ready to go. For example, if council would change one simple number in the budget, it could affect five or 10 different areas of the budget. And if that comes up next, at the next meeting, it might be very difficult to get it all together in time for you to actually adopt. So anyway, the changes that I would like to offer, and I guess I'm offering these as part of the public hearing?
Okay.
Have to do with the purchase of the villages. And there's a memo in the packet under A, and I hope you didn't miss it. Did you miss it?
No, I got it.
Oh, okay. And I, just in case you did, I handed it out tonight. And these are changes, for the most part, to shore up the general fund, because the general fund took a hit on this purchase. The funding came from the open space, about $550,000, and affordable housing, about $860. And the general fund, actually, a little bit more than, affordable housing was a little bit less than $860, because we counted a house that hadn't sold yet. And general fund, about 1.2, which digs into our fund balance a little more than I would like. So I've made some suggestions here on how we can shore up the general fund. And I don't know if you want me to go through those one by one or not, I'm happy to do it.
If you wouldn't mind, just to kind of verbalize.
I'd like to eliminate the $183,000, $184,000 transfer from the general fund to the water fund. This was a partial subsidy of the water fund due to the loss of revenue that we're going to get from Rhodes End. The water fund is tight, but we foresee that changing rapidly over the next two years, and I believe it could do without that subsidy. Same with the sewer fund, the Sewer Operations Fund, eliminate a $65,000 transfer from the general fund to the Sewer Operations Fund. Number three, decrease $100,000 transfer from the general fund to the Street Operations Fund by $25,000. We put the $100,000 in to, once we know that the annexation is complete and can't any longer be challenged, we would like to renovate the gravel streets. I think the $100,000 was generous, and that could be covered at $75,000. Transfer $177,000 from the Facilities Capital Fund to the Affordable Housing Fund, and decrease the capital reserve by $177,000 in the Facilities Capital Fund. This has to do with the Gally Street property that we bought a few years ago to expand the parking for City Hall. And in the meantime, it's being used as rental housing. But it would become, at any point, we determine an asset of the Facilities Fund, and we might as well cash that out now and give ourselves some reserve in the general fund, and make sure we don't spend that money on something else. Then, additional, for the Affordable Housing Fund of $300,000, let's see, which would reduce the affordable housing expenditure to $155,000. In other words, we would have spent all of the resources of the Affordable Housing Fund except for $155,000. And then finally, to include about $100,000, or include $100,000 in the general fund for various expenses associated with the villages over the next year. We can't currently identify those. There's going to be some, likely, there's going to be some property tax. I don't think it'll be significant. There could be some planning costs, there could be some surveying costs, possibly appraisal costs, those kind of things, just to make sure that we have funds to maintain the property and move forward with transferring it to private development over time. These changes would increase the general fund ending balance by $473,000, from 1.9 million to 2.4 million. And again, they all have to do with the villages. And those pages, the budget pages showing that were attached to the memo. So I'd like you to discuss those when you get into discussion here in a little bit, and also any other changes that you, as council members, would like to see in the budget.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm a little confused by the two paragraphs at the very beginning of the budget amendments. Says that we've scheduled a June 28th meeting for the council's adoption. And then the next paragraph, it says that the documents are to be ready for the 27th adoption.
I can't read a calendar.
Try the 24th.
I think the 24th would work.
Yeah, I wasn't too far off. I hope my numbers are closer than my days. I apologize. It's been a busy time, and sometimes I don't have somebody proof.
You're all right. We knew what you meant.
Thank you, sir.
We're there. Before we, you know, or if we could, maybe take any questions regarding this while it's fresh. Are there any questions of Mr. Hawker's recommendations? Go for clarity, or?
I have nothing. I read it over, and I understand it, and I don't, I'm very comfortable with it.
Anybody, any other counselors?
I just think it's a good move.
Okay. Putting that aside, then, moment, anything else regarding budget items coming off of the Budget Committee raises questions that have come up? This would be a good time, talk about it. If I, if you don't mind, I'd like to put on the table, just to kick around, you know, the water and sewer increase that was proposed. If nothing else, to walk through it and explain to people, you know, why it's there and talk it through a bit. Because if you recall, we were recommending a 4% increase in both sewer and water. And that, nothing so far has changed that, it's built into the budget. But I've heard from a few people, you know, just questioning it, and I think it's appropriate to bring it up for our, if, but if I'm the only one, then I'll.
I'd like you to bring it up and explain things, Dick. I think the public would like to hear that.
Okay. If I could, and maybe some of the things that run through my mind on, because I'm, I think it needs to be done. So I'll say that right up front. A couple of things are happening, as you all know, with the annexation, you know, that population, water bill cuts in half. So those are two, both sewer and water, revenue items that adversely affect that. You know, the other thing I look at is, in my own mind, and we've done, is keep the sewer and water operations separate and distinct, away from the general fund, and operate with just the fee, the cost of the water and the operation and delivery. And during the Budget Committee, I specifically asked Mr. Hawker about those, that issue, and I think he answered it well. At what, what level of a contingent fund would you like? Because that's really what we're doing, is building a contingency fund or maintaining a contingency fund, as, in both enterprises. Because as we all know, we've come up with emergencies and things that need, that happen, that we want to be ready to fix. And finally, 4%, I'm not real good in math, but 4% on a base rate is roughly 80 cents a month. Double that with sewer, and we're talking $1.60 a month. Now, that's not to say that that isn't an increase, it is. But it's so significant, insignificant, that I think it's prudent for us to move ahead on small bits, 4%, rather than, again, some communities are just going through a 15%. And that's what we would be faced with doing at some point. So I'm not at all uncomfortable with the rate increase, but I think if there's questions or statements you'd like to pull out, now would be a time. Counselor?
Couple of things. Number one, I think that when you compare Lincoln City's water costs to the public, that we are consistently in about the median, the average of cities, and much less than many cities in Oregon. So it's not like we're gouging or that we're overpricing. I think we're right where we need to be. And secondly, I just want to commend the volunteer, the public members of the Budget Committee. I felt that, in the number of years that I've been involved in that, either on the council or as a member, that there were more good questions raised this year by the public members than I've ever seen. And I thought that it was very well done.
Mayor, if I may, have a few comments about the 4% increase?
Sure.
I, I'm troubled by any increase in the rates when we have, we still have a challenging economy. And I'm more troubled by the number of shut-offs that we do for lack of payment. And that's a number that I have not been looking at regularly, and I'm going to start doing that and sharing it with council. We do a fairly extensive process when there's a delinquent bill. We do a door hanger, and a letter goes out, and offering an opportunity for a public hearing. And then there's ultimately a shut-off, and usually, you know, it's the next day or the same day that they come in with payment, and we turn it back on and charge a turn-on fee of, I don't know, $25? Whatever, I think. I'm going to guess that, from talking to our people out in the field that do this, that probably half of these people could easily afford to pay it, and they, and they just don't think to pay it until it gets turned off. And the other half, people are living from hand to mouth, and I'm really concerned about that. And I don't know if we, if we should be doing something different than we're doing now, whether we should give people more time. We do make payment arrangements. It is an issue that concerns me greatly, and so if you hear people are concerned about a 4% increase, yeah, I guess some people, unfortunately, in this community, that that makes a big difference too. And so we do need to hold it down. I think 4% is modest. I noticed in the packet on Newport's rate increase of the second year of 15%. And I think their bill is approaching almost double ours. That the survey that they had commissioned to have done showed that they were in the middle, with the new rates, that they would be in the middle of the median of the group of cities of a size of 20,000. And they're almost double what we are. So our survey that we did a couple of years ago showed that we are in the middle of the pack, period. Not of cities of 20,000, but just statewide average. Anyway, there's just a few comments. We are sensitive to the people that can't afford to pay. At some point, I'd like council to look at that a little bit harder, and say, is there something, should we give people more time? Or is that just making it worse when the bill gets higher and higher, and now you really can't afford to have it turned back on? So it's a dilemma.
Yeah. I guess, and I would applaud, I've made a note as well, so once we start collecting data, you know, we'll have a little more information
Yes, sir.
Of how many, and whatever. But I guess this might be a good point to, you know, remind the citizens of Lincoln City that we do have in this community, at least I'm thinking of one entity in particular, Angels Anonymous, that you step forward from citizen contributions to assist in those kind of emergencies if something should arise. So, and we can put people in touch with that if they need
Yes, sir.
That kind of assistance. I guess if it's an ongoing, that raises the other issue, and we need to look at to see the reason for the shut-off and.
Yeah, there's various reasons. We had one complaint recently that they couldn't afford the bill, a fixed income, whatever. We looked at the usage, and the usage for, was a family of two, was pretty high. Well, if you use more than the base, which is about 3,000 gallons a month, yeah, you're going to pay more than the base charge. And that, I believe to a large extent that that's under the control of the user. They were watering this extensive yard. Well, is there alternatives? If you really can't afford to pay the water bill, should you be watering a large lawn, for example? I'm not commenting beyond to say, those are choices that are made. So there are, there is some of that. People can keep their bill down. If it ever goes above the base, watch your usage, watch your leaks, watch your toilets, et cetera.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Out of curiosity, has the city ever thought of doing, like Northwest Natural Offers, you know, an average, where they've looked at your, they look at your usage over the past couple of years, and they will average your bill for you? So you're paying pretty much the same payment each month, and at the end of the year, you either have a surplus or a negative, but that you have to catch up on. But has the city ever looked at doing that?
Budget billing?
I know fluctuations of water during the summer as opposed to the winter, in a fixed payment, sometimes is much more helpful than, you know, the zippity-doo-dah.
I think it's been discussed, but I don't know how extensively. Debbie, just, you don't need to speak to this. Is our system capable of a budget billing? Yes, we are capable of that, we could offer it.
Yeah, that might be a partial solution.
Let's look, if we can, a little harder at the reasons, if we possibly can, for non-payment.
Yeah, I think it's something worth looking at, and then come up, as Counselor Ryan has suggested, some alternatives, and we can do that offline.
I'm very troubled when our crew heads out with 50 shut-off notices in their hand. I'm very troubled by that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I know this particular part of what we're discussing may not, for what I'm bringing up, there will be a different place to do this, but something that I felt for a long time is having our base rate include 3,000 gallons. The intent of that was for, basically, people who were living here, or living in the house and not operating a business out of it. And I think the houses that are involved in businesses, basically, should lose that base rate, that all of the water that goes through the meter should be charged for. You know, and I, I think Roger will remember, whoever was on the council years ago, when the base rate was implemented, it was for and in behalf of the house occupant, you know, not for operating a business. So if we adjusted that, and I'm not sure how much money, in the big picture of things, it may not be a large amount of money, but it might help offset, you know, an average billing, say, you know, establishing an average bill per month, or some other program that might be helpful to the homeowner, which was, once again, the reason for the base, the base rate allowance of 3,000 gallons.
I understand. Yep. Other comments regarding the budget, or this? So do you think we covered the sewer-water rebuttals, or? I think so. Anything that council needs to hear, or? Okay. Other?
I just want to point out, I think the public hearing is still open.
It is. Oh, we're discussing? Is that what you're implying?
No, I just wanted to remind you that the public hearing is still open.
Well, you know, somebody might want to weigh in with us. You know, I'm, we like to talk. Other opportunities, suggestions you want to put on the table?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to close the public hearing.
Is that, is that just to make the legal counsel happy?
I want him to. I want him to be very happy.
Okay. We have a motion with a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Okay, now we can keep discussing.
Yes.
Okay.
I have nothing more to discuss.
Yeah, you know, I agree with Roger. I find that the budget committee process that we've been going through, and as tedious as it may be, is very fruitful and beneficial. So when we come to the city council, you know, I'm ready. So, Eddie, I guess the staff will be having these suggested changes?
Well-
Or how do we operate that?
You'll actually get a motion, because we can't, I'm going to have to turn to council here for a minute, but I think there's two options. One is we can give you a motion that identifies all these changes to the approved budget. Again, staff can't change what the committee has done. That is, exists now as an approved budget. Only council now can change that. And I believe you could do that by two ways. One is we can make a motion that's specific, fund by fund by fund with all these changes. Or two, perhaps, we could adopt them by reference?
My understanding was the staff recommendation was to make those changes, so I don't know you need to list each one out if you've already done it.
So the motion would be to approve the staff recommendations?
Well, you're not approving the budget.
Not tonight. I mean, this would be next-
Yeah, I mean, do we need to do anything to move these recommendations from tonight so that they appear the 24th?
Just give me a good heads up. If you just generally agree, then we'll present them to you in a fashion that you can adopt-
Done. Okay.
-at the next meeting.
Okay. Everybody, I think, comfortable, looking around, nodding heads from council?
You know, I have to editorialize for just a minute. I don't come in to council after the approved budget and say, I'd like to make changes to what the budget committee did. This was a really unusual, the purchase of the villages after the budget was approved-
Right.
-was a very unusual and extremely large event, and I just had to come to you and say, I'd like to see some changes.
Yep. Understand. Okay, so the consensus is?
Okay. Well, I think we're going to return with a budget for adoption.
Yeah, official. Yeah, that's good. Okay. With that, we've then closed that public hearing. Any other discussion before we move to resolutions? Hearing none. We then have resolutions. Resolution number 2013-06, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City establishing written procedures for water bill adjustments and delegating authority to the city manager or designee.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt resolution 2013-06.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to adopt resolution 2013-06. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton, Ellingson.
Yes.
And Norakis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have resolution number 2013-10, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City establishing traffic control restrictions on the city property known as the villages at Cascade Head and adjacent city-owned conservation lands.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt resolution 2013-10.
Second.
We have a motion with a second for adoption of resolution 2013-10. Discussion? I happen to have discussion, oh, I'm sorry, counselor?
No, I mean, go ahead. You probably say it better than I can.
Why, I don't know if it's the same.
If it's not, then I-
Uh, city councillor, city attorney. I'm concerned about the wording in this resolution where it alludes to open space. We talk about, and I'm desperately looking for where I footnoted it, but I think in the first couple of pages, we call it open space, and in our, at least my vernacular, open space has a separate connotation in what can be done within open space. And I'm a little concerned about further in the resolution, we talk about dog park or frisbee, golf frisbee, different things that might be able to be used, motocross racing, bikes. Those typically aren't in open space.
And I, I'll just point out that this is not a zoning district designation of open space, nor is it a zoning district designation of park. It was simply the intent to, this is a traffic control resolution, which has, as it's based, the protection of the infrastructure that's out there, as well as the protection of the natural environment that's out there, both the wetlands and upland areas that are sensitive. There are properties or sections of this property which the council, through the purchase, as well as the development plan as it currently exists, intend to set aside for various conservation, open space, park uses. We're not making those designations today, and the resolution alludes to a future appropriate planning process to do that. But what the most immediate need was, was to control access to the property, and almost immediately upon purchase, the manager issued an order on traffic control. Those orders are somewhat ephemeral, so they go away, and are they going to be appealed? And so we thought the best way to do this was to bring it to you in terms of a resolution. And that resolution actually then triggered me writing an ordinance to kind of provide some default backup to this. So it was not the intention to designate any specific areas, open space or park, but rather just to indicate that the, because of those purposes, the underlying purposes, were part of this project and will be decided later through the planning process, that traffic control was necessary.
Okay.
Off-street parking, before you get up there, if we're going to block off the whole thing, where are people supposed to park to access the?
Well, we're looking at that. We know that there can be probably at least three or four parking places right in front of the gate that, or on the road beside, on the side of the road leading up to the gate can be designated. More than that, we're going to have to take a look at. And we've already decided to come up with something on that. Because we want pedestrian access. We want people to get out and enjoy the property and see the property. We just don't want motorized vehicles for a lot of reasons, but the road isn't complete. We don't wish to have police patrol regularly have to go up there. We don't want a bunch of parties there on weekends at night, at midnight and things like, I mean, there's a lot of reasons. I do, and my apologies to the city attorney, who gave me every opportunity to review this well before tonight, and I missed something on number four. The road, I'm sorry, number three and number four, limit access of vehicles to government, city vehicles, government officers, or city contractor vehicles on official business. We actually have to, I believe, provide some private access. There is a private owner. And we might, for example, want to provide access to somebody who might be interested in purchase of one of the pods, one of the areas. And so what I'd like to include, or as authorized, councillor, or as?
I actually think that perhaps at the end, we simply say that access may be permitted by the city manager in writing, so that we can cover individual cases, such as when there's another owner that needs access.
There is one other owner behind the gate, and we met with her last week, and after I saw this and I realized she wants to be able to see her property once or twice a year. So, and then again, there could be, say, somebody interested in purchasing. I'd like to be able to give them a letter and let them be free to go and look the property over. We may have an appraiser or surveyor, et cetera. Of course, those are contractors, but-
I guess I suggest a new number seven, which would simply state the city manager may authorize vehicular access by letter, and we'll have a new number eight would be the existing number seven. I'll reprint that and get it for the mayor's signature.
And who made the motion for approval of that resolution? Is that acceptable?
That would be acceptable.
And the second?
Acceptable.
Okay. Any other discussion? With that, we have a motion with a second for approving resolution 2013-10, as amended. All those in favor, oh, roll call, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Norakis.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we have resolution 2013-11, a resolution authorizing staff to apply for organ parks and recreation department grant, recreation department grant, to update parks' master plan.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Although, or roll call, please.
Norakis.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And resolution 2013-12, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. entertain a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve resolution 2013-12. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
And Norakis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2013-09, a resolution rescinding resolutions number 2010-33 of the City of Lincoln City in redesignating bank depositories and authorized signatures for checks and drafts of the City of Lincoln City.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion with a second. Any discussion?
Ms. Mamoni? I'm looking at section three, especially line 22 and 23, whether or not such checks, drafts, or orders are deposited to the individual credit of the person so signing. That sounds to me like I could sign a check and deposit it in my account?
Yes, for example, a payroll check. Heather and I sign the payroll checks, but we also receive pay. We have expense reimbursements that come through AP. The one factor on that is we do have dual signature on checks, and so there will always be a second signer on a check written out to me, for example.
So I could not sign the check and deposit it into my account?
As-
Unless it was a payroll check.
A signer could not on their own sign a check. There has to be two signatures. Not sure I'm answering your question.
Yeah, let's say that you traveled on city business and turn it in, and only you and I were in town when the checks came out. And as council president, you could be one signatory, I could be the other. So you are signing a check that was made out to yourself, but only because there was another signature on it.
Okay.
And that does happen with payroll, obviously. You're going to have a paid employee signing paychecks. It doesn't happen very much anywhere else.
There's occasional expense reimbursements for travel, but not a lot.
I mean, for example, I haven't had expense reimbursement in six or eight months, so I don't turn in much expense.
Thank you.
I haven't had one in 12 years.
Other questions? Did, did we have a motion on that one? Okay, we've got a motion with a second. Roll call, please.
Norakis.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we have ordinances. We have, again, reminding councillors and public that we've gone to this process of having first and second readings of ordinances, purposely to allow and make sure the public is informed at the first reading, and then have as an opportunity up to the second reading to make comments. First, let's see, we have first and second reading, first reading of ordinance number 2013-7, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 10, which is Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.08 Administration, adding a new section, 10.08.080 penalties relating to enforcement of fines. Discussion or questions? And you need to read that one, do you, city attorney?
Yes. I'll just start with the reading. This is the first reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, amending Chapter 10.08 Administration, adding a new section, 10.08.080 penalties relating to enforcement and fines, by way of a staff report in the process of doing the traffic control order for the village's property and associated property. We discussed, the city manager and I, whether or not we should have a default penalty specified in the code for violations of traffic control orders that the manager prepares, as well as resolutions. We thought it would be best to clarify that in the code, so that's why we drafted this ordinance. Now, I did the normal two-step process in the staff report, and if you'd like to adopt it, you do have the ability to adopt it all at one meeting. However, if you want to go with the two-step process, approve the first reading today and move, continue second reading will be held in two weeks. Staff's okay with that. If you wanted to just get it over with today, we can just, you would have to unanimously approve it to approve first reading today.
So discussion about the ordinance, first and foremost. Any questions?
I've got a question, not being one of these people that gets a lot of fines or things like this, but what's a class B civil infraction, what's a class A civil infraction?
Well, A under your code is $1,000, and B, I'm not sure, I think it was 700.
And that's an up to?
Up to. Maximum.
Maximum.
That answered my question.
Other questions?
I did add something that, I mean, in terms of, this is mostly housekeeping, but I did specify that for a violation offense, you can also be ordered to pay restitution. And so if there was damage that was done, I thought you should be responsible, so I specified it.
So the-
I would make a motion that we adopt first reading of ordinance 2013-7. I would amend my motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2013-7 and immediately following the vote, have a second reading or adoption.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to, in essence, do the two-step tonight on this ordinance. Oh, a discussion? You don't think this is anything that the public's going to weigh in on in the next two weeks?
I think it needs to be enforced as soon as possible.
Okay. That'd be your motive, okay? Roll call, please.
I have a question.
Okay.
I thought on the first motion that Councilor Ellingson did it?
Yes, I'll rescind my second. I learned something. I, I thought, I have always thought that a second reading would occur automatically if someone, if the vote wasn't unanimous.
Yes, that is true.
And so essentially, somebody by not voting unanimous could override...
Yes, it will have to come back at a subsequent meeting for a second reading.
So I'm trying to get all of that processed in my mind, but I, I understand it now. So I'll rescind my initial second.
Okay, thank you.
So who, did we have a second on the...
Yes.
The motion to, and who was it? Oh, Chester, okay.
Chester.
Thank you, all right.
Okay, so the vote, Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norakis.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'll just do the second reading. This is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, amending Chapter 10.04, oh, eight, sorry, Administration, adding a new section, 10.08.080 penalties relating to enforcement and fines.
I would move that we adopt ordinance 2013-7.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Roll call, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
And Norakis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have a second reading of ordinance number 2013-2, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 2, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.64, Arts Committee, Section 2.64.020 Membership, and Section 2.640, point 050 Rules and Procedures relating to membership residency requirements and related meeting procedures.
Hey, this is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 2, Administration and Personnel, amending Chapter 2.64, Arts Committee, Section 2.64020 Membership, and Section 2.64050 Rules and Procedure relating to membership residency requirements and related meeting procedures.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number 2013-2.
There's a second? We have a second, all right? Thank you. We have a motion with a second. Any discussion? I might point out that the Arts Committee actually had to cancel its meeting or not, didn't have a quorum, even though it had three people in place this last week. So this will assist them in, they have five members, so it fits. Roll call, please.
Norakis.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we have a second reading, ordinance number 2013-3.
This is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 2, Administration and Personnel, amending Chapter 2.06, City Appointed Bodies, adding a new section, 2.06030 relating to quorum and the effect of a lack thereof.
Any discussion or motion?
I would move that we adopt ordinance...
20...
2013-3.
Yep.
Second.
And with the second, we have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norakis.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Second reading for ordinance number 2013-4.
For these next two ordinances, they were in your packet, there was a letter from the OLCC approving the ordinances in the draft form, so that's what we were waiting for. This is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 1, General Provisions, adding a new Chapter 1.26 Uniform Administrative Appeals Ordinance relating to creating a uniform administrative appeals process.
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to, and a second to adopt ordinance number 2013-4. Discussion? All, or roll call, please.
Who seconded that one?
Henry.
Right. Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
And Norakis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we have a second reading, ordinance number 2013-5.
This is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 5, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations, adding a new chapter, 2, I'm sorry, 5.02, Liquor License Review relating to establishing a local review process for OLCC applications.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve ordinance number 2013-5. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Henry, did you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Norakis.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Second reading, ordinance number 2013-6.
This is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Chapter 4, Real Property, adding a new Chapter 4.06, Conveyance of Public Utility Easements relating to the delegation of duties to the city manager.
Entertaining a motion?
Your Honor, before the motion is made, Mr. City Attorney, I believe you said Municipal Code Chapter 4 and its Title 4, Real Property?
You are correct.
Thank you. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2013-6. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norakis.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, I know this is cleanup housekeeping, but it needs to be done. So I apologize to the public for having to walk through with all that. Not apologize to you councilors, you might as well read the stuff, so. Now, let's go to comments from the public one more time. Please, Gene.
Gene Scruton, A1 Beach Rentals, Whistling Winds Motel, 3264 Northwest Jetty. I wanted to make a comment at the planning meeting, I think it was last Tuesday, I believe, there was a comment about the houses were outside in the no zone, and I don't have a dog in that bite, but the city manager made a comment, it was, it kind of caught my attention. He said, "In business, there's winners and losers." And I wanted to make the point that vacation rentals are not businesses. A1 Beach Rentals a business, Pacific Retreats a business, but I did get a tax account lawyer here to put this up, says IRS does not look at a vacation rental as a business. And that is why people usually with one vacation home file a Schedule E rental and not a Schedule C business. IRS considers it not-for-profit activity and therefore limits passive losses at the $25,000. Also subject to limitations in adjusted gross income. The reasons most homeowners, homeowners don't make a profit when renting their home out is because they are allowed to deduct expenses, including depreciation of the home. All these expenses offset the rental income and creates what's called, IRS calls passive losses. And that was the end of that. One other thought I got, too, is, I'm kind of concerned, and I don't know about this cascade fund thing here, but it concerns me, it's out of the general fund, because I'm just concerned down the road here a little while, they're going, the city's going to be wanting more money, more trans room taxes. We already have the highest trans room taxes north of Lincoln City. Cannon Beach is 8%. Seaside's 9%. And I'm just concerned that they're going to take that money out and all of a sudden they're going to want and come and get more money from the businesses and the regular people. And I think everybody, all businesses are stretched to the limit. So I'm just really concerned about that. I mean, we're into logging and all kinds of stuff, and I just wonder if that's the regular mission, the original mission of, of local government. But another thing I was going to say is, on that water shut off, there was an incident we had with a customer, she's a single widow, and the water got shut off while the lady was making a bottle for their daughter and the guy was in the shower. So we went up there, and so my wife called and paid it because she didn't have the money. And then I got a thing from the city that said that we can't do that. If you want to do that, and I saw a piece of paper, it looked like a two-page form, I just basically checked it in garbage. But I think it was basically wanting us to say we were going to be responsible for the person's water, and we couldn't do so. I thought that was kind of bad, like if you had a neighbor that got their water shut off or something, you couldn't go in and pay it just to help them out evidently on this deal. I'm not sure on that. Do you know about that at all?
I don't.
I can't ask you, but I'm just curious.
No, we'll check, we'll check on that and see if there's some legal reason.
I didn't really read the form, but it looked at a glance like, you know, basically they wanted us to be a full-time pair of this lady's. I know, we were just trying to help someone out, especially the guy in the shower.
I appreciate hearing that. We'll get to the bottom of that.
I can tell you that there is a form, if, you know, basically, if you're the renter, you, there has to be a separate form with the city to have the bill sent to somebody else. So the owner, the bill goes to the owner unless there is a, something in writing with the city utility department and they have their own form for that, it's a two-page form.
Right, I saw it.
But I don't think that would prohibit you from helping somebody and paying their bill.
Well, we were just trying to help this lady and help ourselves. It's bad for business and the city when people are shutting water off, but they said we couldn't do it any longer. And we've got 30 customers, I don't want to sign a thing for every customer, but I was, it was just a comment.
Let me look into that. But can you, if you don't mind, can you clarify what, you said that I was saying, there's business winners and losers?
No, it was the city attorney.
Oh.
Yeah.
You're to blame.
And I'm not getting on you about it, I'm just saying, and I, and I'm really concerned about, I don't know if on time, the city and powers-to-be painting these individual houses into businesses, because we all know if you own a business, I know a lot of people here involved in business, if you're a business, you've got no rights. And if you're a private customer or private citizen, you have a fair amount of rights. I'm just concerned about that.
Gene, I, I guess I appreciate this. Couple of comments I'd make. One, you know, we've missed you at the budget committee hearings, because this would be a great time, you know, to, to hear about your concern about revenues and the kind of businesses the city's in.
If I was retired, I'd think about it.
But a couple of comments, if I could, on that, to enlighten you. One, there, there is additional revenue coming to the city shortly. It's roads end.
Is that 100%?
It's roads end revenue.
Is that 100%?
I don't understand 100%.
Is that a done deal, then, is what you're saying?
It's been annexed July 1.
Okay.
The other is urban renewal, you know, and quite frankly, we do a five-year forecast of budget, so you can see as they drop in, you know, so that there's additional revenue coming in, significant. Now, quite honestly, the cascades, the village cascades, I also see as a great enhancement, I've called it economic development, and why I was jumping on the city attorney for alluding to a park or an open space is...
You've got so many of them now.
The idea is to sell the property to developers to build houses so that the tax base raises and people live in Lincoln City. So with that, that's a huge engine, economic development engine, which brings revenue. So, you know, with, with your help as a businessman, keep it on track there.
Yeah.
The other, I guess I'm, and logging, as, as we've alluded to, we're not in the logging business, where we've been neglectful in managing the open space. Trees need managing, parks need managing. We're just doing that now. It just so happens that it's logging, so it's actually prudent business management. And then lastly, you're, you're going against the VRD work group, of which you are a part, that clearly stated in their report that vacation rentals are a business. At this day, I had Richard Burke, who gave his report on your behalf, numerous times asked him are vacation rentals businesses? Did the group conclude they were businesses? He said yes. So...
It's not been there that time, I don't recall that. I know, I know they're trying to paint this into that corner because...
Well, but you, you are.
Right.
I'm just putting you on notice, you want to go back and read, read the report and stuff, so I hear you, and it's a nice touch, but, you know, it is a business, so...
So wheelchair ramps are coming and handicap stuff shortly, is what you're doing.
I, I don't...
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the statement, that, is that what you're alluding, what do you, what Gene is...
Yeah, I, I was taken back by that, because this has, functioning as a business has different, different implications, but one of the implications I do not see is automatically putting a home under a commercial billing code. And that presumably can happen certainly with new houses that are built to have an occupancy greater than, what, 13?
16.
16? Okay. But automatically, by us calling it a business, or what it is, doesn't put it under the commercial billing code in itself. So I don't see that coming.
Yeah. I know that the discussion at the planning commission meeting, I, I don't think I was the one that said there are winners and losers, but I did talk about the existing code making a VRD accessory use, which is incidental and subordinate to the primary use. But, and that, in that context, there's an argument that, you know, you could use your home primarily for your vacation home, but that incidentally and subordinate less than your use, you could use it for a VRD. But I did quote the report that said it's a business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, isn't there something along the lines that extends to the number of parking spaces that are there, and if there are more cars than that, then there's a violation and so on and so on? The reason I'm asking that is that in the neighborhood that I live in, the state has two houses that they house people from mental hospitals and that sort of thing. And today I went by one of them, there were seven cars parked out there, one of them in the street, so I had to go around it. And this is something that happens frequently. Plus, there was a bus there on top of that, a small bus. two houses, that they house people from mental hospitals and that sort of thing. And today I went by one of them, there were seven cars parked out there, one of them in the street, so I had to go around it. And this is something that happens frequently. Plus, there was the bus there on top of that, a small bus. And that, to me, is a violation of the parking ordinance, and it's also providing, putting a business in a residential zone. And I'm trying to figure out how that ever happened.
Actually, I think that those facilities are specifically provided for and, I believe, designated as appropriate and residential, but I can certainly look into it.
Now, we've had some complaints about that, and then some of the operations that go on there, and I just think we need to take a look at it.
Well, the group homes are not, are mandated by state or federal for five unrelated, can have five, I believe, five unrelated adults, and we can't stop that, plus staff.
And I think it's designated for residential as well, so.
In residential neighborhoods.
Well, certainly, they're in violation of the parking ordinance, and I would think then...
I don't believe it is, but it could be. I mean, it could be made to be, I don't believe it is today. I don't think we have a restriction on the amount of parking.
But we've been talking about...
VRD parking is a different issue.
VRD parking, and if you're considering that a business and you're considering what the state's doing a business as well, I mean, they're operating a business there, they have employees there. So what's the difference?
One, we regulate, and one we can't, I guess, is the simple answer.
I just don't see why they have an exemption to the rules that we have to abide by.
Well, I think parking issues can be resolved in other ways, and we can certainly come back and talk about that. And one of the things that we never did get to any kind of resolution through the workshop on VRDs was how we deal with parking. That's still a question out there. We're still trying to deal with the fundamental issues of licensing, yes and no zones, and those kind of things. But ultimately, we've got to deal with this parking issue, too, and I'm hoping that's a second step, and we get past the first steps, and then move on to the parking issue. We could deal with other parking then, too. Other questions? And anybody else like to make comment? Seeing none, hearing none? Comments from council? Roger?
I just want to apologize for allowing the meeting, the urban renewal meeting, to go so far over the time. We started it late, but there was an issue on there with, about the cultural center, and I thought that was a very important issue, and I thought everyone ought to have time to vent their spleen on it, so we did go over, but I think it was a worthwhile discussion, and I'm glad we did it.
Thank you, sir. Gordy?
No, I have no comments.
Okay.
I yield my time.
Chester, what do you have?
I'd like to, I'd like to thank the city attorney for bringing us five resolutions and extra ordinances, and thank the council for plowing through them and straightening out the books. Thank you.
Wes?
I have nothing.
Well, let me, I've got a couple of reminders and announcements for the public. Thursday, June 27th, 4 o'clock to 6:00 p.m. at our cultural center, is actually a Lincoln City Transportation System plan, an open house to, you know, listen to, to hear, to see, give input on the plan as it's starting to germinate. Again, at the 27th, 4 to 6, at the cultural center, citizen input is certainly desirous. Also, for you seniors, and I'm not sure it actually is limited to seniors, at the senior center, June 15th, Saturday, is their strawberry social. So we'd invite you to attend at, the senior center's at the community center, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There is a small charge of $3.50 for strawberry and shortcake, so you could be sociable. And finally, right around the corner this week starts the Slets Bay Music Festival. Again, this first week is at the cultural center, and I might point out that there's even some free activities on Sunday. They're called master classes, piano's at 10 and violin at 1, so you could actually go and listen. There's numerous other Saturday, Friday, Wednesday performances in the evening. Then it moves to Salashan and so the Side Door Cafe, Eden Hall. So it's two weeks of good music and a lot of talent. With that, anything else? Good to the order? We'll call it a night. Thank you.